Good afternoon and welcome to the one o'clock meeting of the Committee on Housing. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly have this hearing due to technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:00 PM on Thursday, February 2nd, here in room 225. And public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. Our time limit today will be two minutes per testifier. If there are temporary technical glitches during our turn to testify via Zoom, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the Committee has your written testimony. At this time, I'd like to welcome Committee members Senator Carl Rhodes. And we'll begin. Our first bill today is Senate Bill 55 relating to tax credits. Our first testifier for this measure is Office of Foreign Affairs and Support. And next, we have Department of Attorney General with comments.
Hi, good afternoon, Attorney General and Senator Rhodes. Deputy Attorney General Laura Maitram, yes, the Department of the Attorney General just have one point. There's an inconsistency in the tax credit. By adding in the tax bracket table, the original $50 is still in there. So, the way it reads is $50 multiplied by the qualified exemptions in accordance with the table below. It appears that, if the intent, or it appears that the table is supposed to replace the original $50. So, there's a conflict, can't have both, the way it's written.
Thank you.
We're just pointing that out.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next, we have, we'd like to welcome our Vice Chair. Senator Drew Kanoa, Vice Chair. Next, we have Department of Taxation with comments.
Hello, Chair Chang, Vice Chair Kanua, members of the Committee. My name is David Richman, and I'm here on behalf of the Department of Taxation. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. The Department stands on its written testimony, providing comments on this measure. If you have any questions, please feel free to move over.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Yimby in support. All right, Catholic Charities Hawaii in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Chang, Vice Chair Kanua. I'm Betty Lou Larson, representing Catholic Charities Hawaii. We strongly support this bill because we feel the double whammy of inflation and increasing rental costs really hit our renters. Catholic Charities serves over 20,000 people, and most of them are renters, and we see that every day, that rent is really becoming a problem. And this would help, that this would show, I think, our citizens that this Legislature does care. It is concerned about peoples and the inflation. We feel that it not only helps lower income people, we even middle-income people are suffering with the inflation and the higher costs of living in Hawaii. So, because this tax credit is so popular, it's the third most commonly used tax credit among Hawaii residents, it would really be appreciated and would be well-used. The, also adjusting the, raising the adjusted gross income tax is critical because that threshold has not been increased since 1989. And so, many middle, who were low-income, really are still low-income, or maybe low-middle income cannot qualify. And so, we feel that's appropriate to raise that also, as well as having provision for increases every three years so that we're not stuck in this old thing of, we haven't done it in 20 years. We could have an automatic extent or a look at that based on the Consumer Price Index. Thank you very much for hearing our testimony.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome Senator Brent Nala to today's hearing. Our next testifier for Senate Bill 55 is Americans for Democratic Action Hawaii in support. Then we have Hackbed in support. League of Women Voters Hawaii in support. Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We do appreciate the Committee's intent to give the people of Hawaii some tax relief. We are concerned, however, that by making the credit, the credits more complex, you would increase the likelihood that people who would be entitled to the credit just wouldn't claim it because they don't know how to do that. We've seen, I've heard from other nonprofit organizations that a lot of people have trouble with this credit, especially as it pertains to getting some predicate information like the landlord G E number. So, we would urge the Committee to consider alternative means such as bracket relief. As you probably are aware, the first five or six brackets in the Hawaii Tax Code haven't been changed since the 1960s. Somebody in the poverty, or at the federal poverty line, typically is in the fourth or fifth income tax bracket from the bottom, which to me seems kind of ridiculous. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Next, we have late testimony, Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks in support. And Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support. We have individuals in support, Bethany Albrecht, Beth Geisting, Kathy Shimata, Reverend Samuel Domingo, Dan Gardner, and Will Karone, all in support. Is there anyone else who's wishing to testify on Senate Bill 55? Members, were there any questions for any testifiers? All right, if not, we can move forward to the next measure on today's agenda, Senate Bill 256 relating to down payments. Our first testifier is HHFDC with comments.
Mr. Chair, Committee members, my name is Del Juan, the recently hired Executive Assistant to HHFDC. And at this time, we would just like to stand on our comments, and we will be available to answer any questions you might have later on this bill.
Thank you. And then in support, we have two individuals, Ashley Loa and William Karone. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 256? If not, members, any questions for the testifiers on this measure? Okay, if not, the next measure is Senate Bill 327 relating to housing discrimination. And first registered testifier is the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Chang, Vice Chair Kanua, members of the Committee on Housing. My name is Marcus Kawatachi. I am the Deputy Executive Director of the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission. The Hawaii Civil Rights Commission stands on its written testimony in support of SB 327. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support.
Well, I'm sure, case of looking council, we stand up for testimony in support.
Thank you. Hawaii Realtors in opposition. Partners in Care and Support. Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support. And then Individuals, Michael Older, Heather Lusk, Will Karone, and Ka'ili, all in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 327? If not, members, any questions for the testifiers? Seeing none, the next measure today is Senate Bill 336 relating to housing. The first testifier is Department of Attorney General with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. While we provide a written comments on just one matter, there's one subsection in the new statutory section that contains a list of three situations that appear to be distinct, meaning that it is one of three situations as applicable, but it reads as A, B, and C rather than A, B, or C. We recommend that the "and" on page four, line 10, be revised to "or", and in our written comments, there's more detailed explanation. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support, followed by BIA Hawaii in support. Thank you. And then two individuals, Damian Waikoloa and Kyle Burchard in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 336? Okay, I don't think we got those comments, so do you know what time they were submitted?
I know. I know who submitted them.
Thank you. Okay, members, any questions? If not, we'll move next to Senate Bill 363 relating to housing. And first, we have late testimony from HHFDC with comments. Senate Bill 363, HHFDC.
Appreciate your feedback. Yeah, my chair. Chair, and we'll stand on our comments regarding Senate Bill 363. And let me go on to say from the last bill that we did not submit anything.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Okay, next, again, for Senate Bill 363, we have the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence in support. Catholic Charities in Hawaii in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, I'm Betty Lou Larson, representing Catholic Charities Hawaii. And I have to say, what a good idea. I mean, how many renters are struggling with poor credit? It rules their lives. I have friends who can't get into housing even though they're paying the rent. So, this is, I think, a wonderful pilot to help people who are struggling, who are now paying the rent on time but can't get credit for, it's not counted on the credit reports, unlike mortgage interest payments, which are accounted, and people can build their credit base on that. So, we feel that this is a pilot that would help so many people. We serve over 20,000 renters, and how many of them need better credit? So, I think this is, we strongly support this bill and feel this is a very creative idea. Let's do a pilot. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of landlords to participate and see that it works, and then hopefully in the future enlarge on it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Housing Affordability Coalition in support. Have Hawaii Habitat for Humanity in support. Stanford Car Development in opposition. Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks in support. And several individuals all in support. We have Jennifer Pemen Twan, Ryan Samonte, Linda Wakatake, Kelly Kogo, Leah Minton, and Will Karone, all in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 363? Members, any questions for any of the testifiers on Senate Bill 363? Not, we'd also like to welcome Senator Henry Aquino to this housing hearing. Next, on our agenda is Senate Bill 763 relating to affordable housing. Our first testifier on Senate Bill 763 is HHFDC in support. Thank you. Next, we have Board of Water Supply with late testimony in opposition.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Mitchell with the Board of Water Supply, and we strongly oppose Senate Bill 763 for the following reasons. In 201H-38A, it reads that the HHFDC may, on behalf of the state, develop along with developers or the housing programs, housing projects, provided in subsection two, it says, provided that the development of the proposed housing project does not contravene any safety standards, tariffs, or rates and fees approved by the Public Utilities Commission for Public Utilities or of the various boards of water supply. The proposed language in subsection B seems to nullify or cancel that out. It provides for housing projects to be exempt from all state and county fees and exactions. The Board of Water Supply does not receive its revenue from the city property taxes. It's self-generated. It receives its money from the Board of Water Customer, Water Rate Payers. So, to allow for subsection B, it would really transfer the cost of providing the water system capacity from the developments or project to existing EWS customers. So, we have provided suggested language for subsection B. Whereas you put in affordable housing units in projects developed pursuant to this section, and you see at the end of our page two, the proposed language is except as provided in 201H-38 subsection A, two, above, as it pertains to the various boards of water supply authorized under chapter 54.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Hawaii's Thousand Friends in opposition. Kahakau Ohana Association in opposition. Momulani Farm in opposition. Haleilani Farm LLC opposition. Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support. Partners in Care and Support. And then we have individuals, Shannon Matson, Ton Kini, Corey Harden, Anne Palfrey, Drina Rodriguez, all in opposition. With comments, we have Seth Kamemoto, an individual. And then we also have individual Maki Morinoe in opposition. Okay, and then also individuals Carol Abe, Janice Palma Glennie, Jean Jewell, Teri Yoshinaga, Anne Harvey, Hannah Hartman, Sheri Thal, Shannon Rudolph, Kurt Takara, Lawrence S. Franco in opposition. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 763? If not, any questions, members, for the testifiers? Okay, we'll move on to Senate Bill 764 relating to affordable housing. We have one testifier, DFI DCCA with comments.
Hello, Church, parents, and members of the Committee. So, my name is Iris Sekita. I'm the Commissioner for the Division of Financial, for the Division of Financial Institutions of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. And we would like to provide some comments on this bill. So, we fully support the intent of this bill to encourage low-income housing or affordable residential housing projects. We wanted to highlight some of the potential unintended consequences of this particular measure from changing the investment limit from 2% of the bank's capital surplus to 2%. The investment to 2% of total assets could implicate a bank's safety and soundness position if those loans are not repaid timely, tax credits are not received because they're more than they would pay in franchise tax, or if there was a serious or significant financial emergency at the bank. These potential circumstances could in turn impact the franchise tax revenues that we receive as a self-funded agency. So, for those reasons, we are providing these comments. As I said, we are totally in support of financing affordable residential housing, and we would like to work with you to see if we can come up with a solution for this.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 764? If not, members, any questions for the testifying? Okay, moving on to our final measure today, Senate Bill 864 relating to housing. And our first testifier is HHFDC in support. Thank you. Next, we have HPA in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, and Chairman of the Committee, standing strong supporting this measure.
Thank you. Hawaii Realtors in support. Catholic Charities Hawaii in support.
Hello, again, I'm Betty Lou Larson, the Catholic Charities Hawaii, and we support this bill. We feel that this is the year for the Legislature to fulfill the dreams and hopes of our residents for housing. Our high cost of driving workers away from Hawaii. Not only that, but the high costs are helping, or making people move, which threatens their children's educational development. So, there's many ramifications of the lack of affordable housing. We also want to urge the Legislature to create this multiple pass. This problem is too big for one entity to try to solve it. And so, having multiple paths with multiple developers working together or working in their own paths would really be a benefit to try to build the number of thousands of units that we need. So, the overall issue is housing, but I think this is a good way to push it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Yimby in support.
I'm off the shore, Yimby, standing strong supporting this.
Thank you. Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support. Partners in Care in support. Thank you. And then Ashley Loa in support. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 864? The Chair actually does have a question for HHFDC and HPA. So, we'll start with HHFDC. How much money would be requested from the Legislature for this bill? And how would your agency use these funds?
As I mentioned earlier, this is my third week. I did bring with me David, who is the Branch Chief for our finance branch, and he can better answer that question.
Sorry, Chair, can I just have the question repeated so I can answer properly?
Yes, how would HHFDC use these funds? And how much are you requesting?
As far as the use of the funds, these would all be used to provide gap financing for affordable housing projects. The gap financing program is something unique to Hawaii. Many states do not have this source of funding for development in order to fill the gap between traditional senior loans and gap financing. And it would also be used to provide administration staff to administer the programs, monitor the progress of projects, and make sure they remain feasible throughout the life of the project.
How much money would you be requesting?
I couldn't give you, I wouldn't be able to give you an educated answer at this time. I'd have to do, I'd like to do a complete analysis of what the expectations are and what we could use and reasonably develop in the quickest amount of time.
By gap financing, are you specifically talking about Lytech projects?
Lytech projects are a significant user of gap financing. So, whatever equity, whatever cannot be financed through the equity generated by Lytech, developers will apply for these gap financing loans in order to fill that financing gap. So, these low-interest loans bridge the gap to make the projects feasible, and they are repaid to the state as the project is constructed.
Would you be considering any projects besides Lytech projects?
Yes, we have the, we would like to continue the last year's RHRF Tier Two program, which is for the missing middle, 80% to 100% AMI, which are not Lytech projects, but they also serve an underserved population of the state. So, RHRF can be used again for gap financing there, where developers would seek other financing outside of Lytech to develop affordable housing units.
Do you know off the top of your head how much money each Tier Two rental housing revolving fund unit received in rental housing revolving fund loans?
I have it in my back, I apologize. It's with me right now, but I do have that data, and I can forward that to you directly, Chair.
Well, I happen to know that it's $188,000 per unit. The Chair just wants to express that using $188,000 taxpayer dollars a unit for a two-bedroom unit that can charge $2,940 a month, which is above the market, is a very poor and inefficient piece of taxpayer funds.
Well, it does, it is a high cost to the unit relative, but you know, the average rents and the AMIs can vary depending on where these units are built. In town, the average rent would be obviously higher than a more out-of-town sort of area. But, you know, the cost of development has been going up. We do award projects based on the most efficient use of the funds, and this financing does provide what is needed to actually construct the units. And we do evaluate these applications to make sure that the monies are repaid timely and the project can support you efficiently.
Well, a timely repayment is over 53 years, as you know. So, that doesn't strike me as a very timely repayment to taxpayer coffers. But would your agency be open to revising the QAP to focus on state projects and projects owned by agencies that are required, or organizations that are required to use their funds to produce more housing in order to more efficiently use these precious taxpayer funds?
I believe the agency is putting together testimony in the, in, more completely in regard to those projects. As far as, you know, the timeliness, it really is just the construction cycle. And we are open, as far as the QAP goes, excuse me. The QAP is governed by Section 42 of the IRS Code. So, we operate within the terms of the code, and we also seek input, you know, as much as possible to make it, to make any adjustments we can within the confines of that code to improve it every two years when it is revised. So, we are open to feedback within what we are allowed to do, but it is governed by the Section 42 of the IRS Code.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll move to HPA. And so, for HPA, the questions will be the same. How would your agency use these additional funds? And how much money would you be able to use?
Thank you, Chair. For FY '24, we could use $59 million for KPT, low rise, phase two, I mean, phase one. That's a 304, 304 units, that's one process. The 201H application was completed, and this is the next project. And we could also use an additional $23 million for, this is for FY '24, due to the increased cost of school street financing and others. Developer has informed us last week that there is an increased cost. For FY '25, for the development of Mail Right, as you know, we went out with an RFQ, 10,000 units RFQ with Mail Right being the first to go because the EIA, SNEPA entitlements, a lot of things are already completed. So, we can use funding from both Tier One and Tier Two for that project for FY '25.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, members, any questions for HPA? All right, I think that brings us to the end of this agenda. I know the Chair has one further question for an earlier bill. Find right now. Maybe not. I can't find it, but all right, if not, members, any other questions for any of the testifiers on any of today's bills? If not, we'll go into recess and we'll come back for decision-making. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Welcome back. We are going to do some decision-making on the measures on today's hearing notice, starting with Senate Bill 55 relating to tax credits. So the committee haven't conferred. The chair's recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments. We'll be taking, we have technical non-substantive amendments for the purposes of clarity and consistency. We'll also take the OHA proposal to amend to link the eligible income bracket thresholds for the low-income household renter tax credit to increases in the consumer price index. We'll take the Department of the Attorney General's recommendation for their amendment as well as the three amendments from the Department of Taxation, which they described in the written testimony. Members, any questions or discussion? If not, again, the recommendation for Senate Bill 55 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 55, chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, vice chair votes aye, Senator Aquino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Alwa.
Aye.
Chair, you have five ayes. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Our next measure is Senate Bill 256 relating to down payments. So based on the testimony submitted by HHFDC regarding the programs that currently exist, the chair will be deferring this measure. Comments? Okay, if not, next, we have Senate Bill 327 relating to housing discrimination. The recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments, and they are technical non-substantive amendments for the purposes of clarity and consistency. Any questions or discussion, members? If not, for SB 327, chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
For SB 327, chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, vice chair votes aye, Senator Aquino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Alwa.
Aye.
Chair, five ayes. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Senate Bill 336 relating to housing. So the chair's recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments. And the amendments will be, will amend the definition of housing development project on page 11, line eight, by replacing the word "use" with the word "project." In addition, we'll take the Department of the Attorney General's recommendation to revise the last word on page four, line 10, from "and" to "or." And also, we'll be making two additional amendments to delete condition one on page one and to replace conditions one and two on page 11 with residential units exclusively for Hawaii residents or owner or renter occupants and own no other real property. Members, any questions, comments? If not, for SB 336, the chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. The chair votes aye.
SB 336, chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, vice chair votes aye, Senator Aquino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Alwa.
No.
No, for Senator Alwa, four ayes. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next, we have Senate Bill 363 relating to housing. Chair's recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments. The amendments will be, oh, this is what I wanted to ask earlier. For HHFDC, HHFDC, we have some questions. So the questions would be to, you raised the concerns about the appropriation staffing and rules and solicitation deadline of October 1st, 2023. So my questions would be, what appropriation would you feel is appropriate? What staffing would you feel is appropriate and what deadline it feels appropriate?
I believe in our testimony. Let's see.
So based on the requirements that were in the bill, we feel that at least one additional full-time position would be required for this. Our concerns with the timing center around the requirements of the bill, we would need time to not only draft an RFP, you know, set up the RFP award, set up the contract, procure a contractor. And then also, we would have to draft admin rules specifically for this matter. In the interest of doing this in a, you know, organized and basically effective matter, from what I know of drafting the admin rules themselves, this could take up to a year to go through the approval and administrative process. And after that, the procurement of a contractor would also require additional time. From my understanding of the process of credit reporting, this has to be done, I believe, through approved vendors to report credit to the credit bureaus. So whatever contractors procured for this would also have to make arrangements with another party, I believe, or make other arrangements to directly report credit bureau, credit information to the bureaus. Research on this matter and also, again, the procurement and contracting process, I believe, would take, you know, I would estimate at least 18 months, but that's just based on my estimate at this time. I would probably, I would need more time to research this further and give a more definitive timeline with milestones noted.
So you recommend an extension of 18 months beyond 10/1/23?
Yes.
And what about the appropriation?
Yeah, I would just recommend one additional staff person dedicate for this, for administering this program on behalf of HHFDC.
As far as an amount, I'm gonna take a guess at this point. You know, we're probably looking at someone who is experienced in this matter. I would guess that they're not real common out there. So I think if you're, we're looking in terms of salary plus fringe, probably a minimum of $150,000.
Thank you. Okay, so the amendments that the chair will recommend will be to insert a appropriation for $150,000, one full-time employee, and then also to extend the rules and solicitation deadline 18 months past October 1st, 2023, whatever that is. In addition, we'll also be deleting the AMI emphasis in section 2D2B. These are the amendments recommended by Stanford Car Development, and also to include state-sponsored public service announcements to increase tenant awareness of existing opportunities within the credit reporting industry. We'll also note in the committee report that participation for landlords in this program is purely voluntary. And we'll also recommend that HHFDCs and other state agencies notify landlords that they work with to publicize these private sector credit building programs for their tenants. Okay, so again, the chair's recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments. Any questions, members? Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Members, on SB 363, chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, vice chair votes aye, Senator Aquino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Alwa.
Aye.
Chair, there's five ayes. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Our next measure is Senate Bill 763 relating to affordable housing. And again, the chair's recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments. And we'll take the Board of Water Supply's recommendation to amend subsection B to add the language "except as provided" in section 201H-38 subsection A2 above as it pertains to the various boards of water supply authorized under chapter 54. Members, any questions or discussion? If not, for Senate Bill 763, the chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
For SB 763, chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, vice chair votes aye, Senator Aquino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Alwa.
No.
Chair, you have four ayes. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next, Senate Bill 764 relating to affordable housing. Chair's recommendation will be to pass this measure unamended. Chair votes aye.
For SB 764, chair's recommendation is to pass unamended. Chair votes aye, vice chair votes aye, Senator Aquino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Alwa.
No.
Chair, you have four ayes. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And finally, Senate Bill 864 relating to housing. The chair's recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments. The amendments will be to first replace affordable, the line affordable rental and for-sale housing in the state with housing exclusively for Hawaii residents for owner or renter occupants and own no other real property. And that will apply to both HPHA and HHFDC. In addition, we have technical non-substantive amendments for the purposes of clarity and consistency. And we'll also fill in the appropriation amounts of $1 billion to HPHA and $500 million to HHFDC. Members, any questions or discussion? If not, the recommendation for Senate Bill 864 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 864, chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, vice chair votes aye, Senator Aquino.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Alwa.
Aye.
Chair, you have five ayes. Recommendations adopted.
Great. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda. There'll be no further business as hearing is adjourned.